You can go ahead and mute yours, yes.
Ready. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to call the April 12th, 2023 San Francisco Council, by your reading to order. Pledge allegiance. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get messages they can hear.
Port Baker, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Cho?
Present.
Councilmember Love?
Present.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Here.
Mayor Tolts?
Your posting of the agenda. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stone Building. The agenda is also posted online. Public comments: The city welcomes public input. Members of the public may address the city council by completing a public comment card and giving it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss matters that are not on the agenda. I reserve the right to place limits on the duration of comments in each area. Our time limit... Excuse me, just one moment. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphone at the podium. Please note that all comments are limited to three minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for a public comment. We'll accept public comments two ways, maybe three. First, we'll take in-person comments for each item. Please fill the speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a count-on camera that will be displayed on the projector screen behind me to help you keep track of your meaning to speak. We will then go to Zoom participants. We are currently expecting, experiencing Zoom technical issues with sound. We're hoping to kind of work that out as we go, and if we're able, then we'll ask for Zoom participants. Unfortunately, if not, then that won't be an option. And then I'll read you to the record any public comments received prior to the meeting. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting email public comments, the city has instituted a 3 p.m. cutoff the day of a Wednesday council meeting for email public comments. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the email comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after the 3 p.m. deadline will be included in the public comment record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Are we on video Zoom? Will people be able to, if they have a public comment, put it in the chat portion?
Yes. So right now, they can see us. They can put in chat. I'm trying to figure out how to tell all of them that that's an option. They can't hear us, and that's the problem. So we're using it so that we'll have the video recording that we can then match up with our separate audio recording later. And I'm going to see if I can get them, the chat working for them as an option.
Well, I appreciate your effort. We apologize to those online that they, at this point, cannot participate fully. However, we're always open for business, so you can come in here and talk to us. Do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically? Probably not. So do we have any public comments from anybody in the room?
I did not receive a request for comment in the room, but we did receive one electronically that was emailed prior to the meeting. This email was previously sent to city council and was distributed to the public. And it's from, excuse me, Mr. Peter Sinclair, and he emailed regarding options for family care personnel to be able to park on the street without having to get a parking, constantly renewing, get a new parking permit. Like, as I said, it was previously distributed, so I'm not going to read it entirely, but it is on the city's website. If anybody would like to go and see that.
And is that the only one?
Yes, that's the only one.
Thank you. And we don't have any other submitted electronically through Zoom at this point because we can't figure that part out. So let's move on to the city manager's report. There's the manager, Ray. Did you have a report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. So a tree planting ceremony was canceled with the Chinese club due to rain in Lacy Park, and that has been rescheduled to May 4th. It's a Thursday, so not our normal Friday, but we're looking forward to that ceremony. And I believe we are going to do a tree walk-through that morning also. So that should be a nice event. This is a thank you to the 34 residents that participated in our survey for city manager recruitment and to our HR director, Lizette Guerrero, for really putting everybody through the process of determining who our next city manager is. And I know the councils worked hard to whittle down the 41 applicants we had apply for the job. And interviews should be conducted the next week or so. So looking forward to potentially a new city manager coming to our city. Budget dates, just as a reminder, the... We have two budget study sessions. These are for operating budgets for all departments, April 21st and the 28th. And then budget adoption has now been rescheduled to June 14th, as the May 26th council meeting has been canceled. On Saturday, April 8th, did have the Easter egg hunt and pancake breakfast for the fire departments. First fire department breakfast in several years because of the pandemic. We had over 4,000 people in the park attend the event. We sold 1,205 Easter egg wristband sales, and it looked like a lot more kids in those holding pens while they were waiting for the Easter egg hunt. And the pancake breakfast resulted in 1,050 of our folks coming in and enjoying pancakes and sausages. It was really a great event, and I just saw a number of residents, really, and others, really enjoying themselves. We cooked over 3,000 pancakes and 280 pounds of sausages. So it was quite an effort and quite an event. Really look forward to that, and it didn't really fail. Lastly, Tuesday, April 4th, we had a National Weather Service predicted damaging winds for the San Gabriel Valley. One of the things that's happened over the last several months, in addition to police and fire normally being on duty and driving around at night, looking for hazards in our city, Public Works has been included in that team, and they've just been doing an incredible job. Every morning when I come in after either these storms and these wind events, our streets look like normal, and mostly because we've had Public Works teams out all night, picking up or removing trees from roadways, branches, clearing storm drains, picking up the thousands of palm fronds that have littered our streets. But just a thank you to Public Works. It's been really one of the bright spots. My city manager assignment has been the work of our Public Works employees. They do a great job. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is Councilmember Love, you have any questions, or is it the manager? Councilmember Cho?
No questions.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No questions and thank you to Public Works.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, May 26th. I just want to confirm that Councilman is canceled, right?
Yes.
And I have no questions, but I appreciate the report. Thank you for all staff who put in just a great job on Saturday at the combination of events. It was a lot of fun, and I saw a lot of bright smiling faces there. It was great to see the community out and about. Motion to waive further readings. Do I have a motion and a second to waive further reading?
Still voting.
Second.
Further reading, pardon. There's been a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Tolts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just a question for our council. Since we are no longer under the... Having meetings by Zoom, when we appear by Zoom, can we dispense on roll call on non-financial matters and just do all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could, we are able to get sound to Zoom, so they're able to hear us. May not be the best quality, but they're hearing us, and they can use the chat for public comments.
Okay, so they will have an opportunity at the end for public comments. Presentations. Presentation of proclamation for Donate Life Month. We are happy to have One Legacy Ambassador with us today to accept this proclamation right here in Florida. Not National Library. I'll get to that later. DMV Donation Life Month, April 2023, whereas organ eye tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving, recognized, life-giving acts recognize worldwide as expressions of compassion to meet those in need. And more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African communities, and a single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, organ donors saved more than 42,000 lives last year, the most ever. Any person can register to be organ and eye and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, and be a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online, or online for Spanish speakers as well, just type in Donate Life California. California residents can sign up to be an organ and eye and tissue donor when applying for or for renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the DMV. And California residents interested in saving life through living kidney donation may visit the website, Living Donations California. Now therefore, be it resolved that a recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 23, is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life Month in the city of San Marino. In doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the DMV. And you, I'm sorry, you're the Ms. Reynoso? Is that right? Did I pronounce it right? Well, come on up so I can provide you with the declaration. Yeah. Would you like to say it?
Is that okay?
Yo, please, please.
May you all, esteemed council members and the city of San Marino, thank you for your recognition and support for Donate Life Month. My name is Darlene Fessius Erma Reynoso, and I have a donor daughter. My mother, Irma Zaladat, was actually a longtime San Marino city employee. She worked at the library as a clerk and with the recreation department. I was fortunate enough to work alongside her for a few years with the recreation department amongst the preschoolers. She was a vivacious woman, mother of four, pastor's wife, and prominent family figure. She loved spending time with others. She loved San Marino real estate and the state sales. She loved getting her, getting pampered, hair and nails, and just being out and about, enjoying life. Most importantly, she loved to give to others, whether that was her time, her resources, sometimes our personal belongings. She was hard to see around the house, she got rid of, but she loved to do that. Unfortunately, in 2012 Memorial Day weekend, she suffered a brain aneurysm at home and was placed on her ventilator. Two independent doctors had conducted various tests to determine the likelihood of her recovery. And sadly, we were informed there was no brain activity, and she was in a vegetative state. As our family was processing this devastating news, we were gently approached by One Legacy, who had informed us that she had registered as an organ donor at her DMV. That was a surprise to us as we were unaware of her decision, but we were comforted in knowing that she was still continuing to give to others even in her passing. At this time, we had very, two close family friends, a brother and sister who had been on dialysis for a few years and in need of kidneys. We had asked if it was possible to designate my mom as a potential candidate as a roommate or may not known. Matching an organ to a recipient is very difficult. Many factors play into that: medical need, tissue type, blood type, height, and weight. Miraculously, they both were a match for my mom. She was able to donate both kidneys, one to each sibling. They are going on 11 years of this short life, no long run dialysis, and moving an extended life that they possibly may not have had a chance at. She was also able to donate her liver and extend the life of a gentleman, and she donated her cornea and tissue. As mentioned, tissue donation itself can save and heal up to 75 lives. My mom's one life made a difference and healed so many others. I am proud to stand here as a representative for One Legacy and their mission, honored to share my mom's story, honored to share it with city of San Marino, who we spent many years with. And I encourage you all to visit onelacys.org for more information about organ eye and tissue donation. And if you are inclined or feel desired to make a difference, you can register online at donatelifecalifornia.org or at a local DMV. I appreciate the time to share my story and the importance of donation.
Well, thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Were you here last year as well?
I was.
I think with a former resident who was, had something. And I just want to remind people that everybody should have a health care directive, and you could also express an area of desire if you used the California form to do it. I don't want to take any business away from them, but it serves the same purpose.
It does.
So you could do a health care directive as well. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's an opportunity for a proclamation for National Library Week. Steve, I was wondering why you were here. April 23rd through 29th is National Library Week, time to highlight the essential role libraries, librarians, and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening communities. The theme for this year's National Library Week is "There's More to the Story." Indeed, our library is full of stories from picture books to large print, audiobooks to eBooks, but the story doesn't end there. Library programming brings communities together for entertainment, education, and connection through storytimes, movie nights, crafting classes, and lectures. Library infrastructure advances communities providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for business, job seekers, and others. On behalf of the city council, I would like to encourage all to visit the Crowell Public Library in person or online to explore and access services and programs, not only during Library National, National Library Week, but throughout the year. I'm happy to present this proclamation declaring April 23rd and 29th as National Library Week in the city of San Marino to Library Manager Herron. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I just want to say thank you so much for all of your support, you know, may and council members and the community, for everything that we do, and for giving us suggestions for ways that we can improve your lives. I really appreciate that. And please, join us not just during National Library Week, but all throughout the year. We're doing programs. We're open to suggestions, and we're here for you. We're here to help you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We will next have a presentation from... Would you like to say something? Okay.
About the library?
Yeah, just about the library.
That's it? I just wanted to also give a plug for the friends. I didn't know if you were going to mention it, and I see Steve is here as well, the friends that support the library so well and run the book shop there. Are having their annual, and a fundraiser on April 21st, I believe, Friday.
Yeah, so they're going to be having, it's not a fundraiser, but it is a celebration of 65 years of service. I don't know about you guys, but I don't have any friends for 60 years. But yeah, so we're so excited. We're so happy to have them support us. Please, but please, if you can, come to the event. You can buy tickets online or in the library. And those are on sale through the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney. We will next have a presentation from South Coast AQMD's Governor and Board Vice Chair and South Pasadena's City Council Member, Michael Caccieri. Michael, I must remind you that this is the city of San Marino, and we like to end our meetings before midnight. Make sure that you leave our, keep your presentation short until before midnight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Brotem, council members, staff, good to see you tonight. I'm your representative on the South Coast AQMD, the largest, arguably, air pollution district in the nation. And I represent the city from Santa Clara, Pasadena, all the way to Claremont, which we are a part of, 2 million people. Next. Love's New, South Coast AQMD was founded about 1976. The federal government said you've got to meet cleaner standards for many types of pollutants. It's LA or San Bernardino Riverside County. They pulled together four air pollution districts. Those are people on the left in the Inland Empire in 1970s demanding all the pollution from LA stop and do something. So the 17 million people right there, it's the third largest kind of containerized area in the United States. You see the ocean going vessels at the bottom, heavy-duty trucks, the warehouses, they come through. There's really two sources of pollution. We say on the left, the stationary resources, other things that don't move: solvents, paint, auto body, paint shops, gas stations, power plants, refineries. We regulate those, the AQMD. On the right, those are the mobile sources. We have no control over ships, planes, trains, cars, trucks. For the first time in California, if you look at the bottom two on the right, off-road gasoline engines for lawnmowers, weed whackers, leaf blowers surpass cars. And California is a source of dirty pollution, unhealthy pollution. So we don't meet the standards for federal ozone and PM 2.5. This is why this is very important today. On the left is ozone. That's formed by volatile organic compounds and stuff coming out of your car, your lawnmowers, ships, planes, trains, et cetera. Mixes, and the photocopy reaction is small. We'll start seeing it in a few months. On the right, this is really dangerous. That gray stick is a piece of your human hair and DNA diameter. The little blue globes are PM 10. We walked in today on the rug. You kicked up particulate matter 10, but your body can fight that, no problem. Couple little more, the red globes does, particulate matter 2.5, and even smaller, ultrfine, your body can't fight that. It goes through the blood brain barrier. You've been fighting that in the last five or 10 years. The lodges in your organs goes through your circulatory system and sits there for years. Very dangerous. Here's why it's important. That's your body, your children's body. That pollution we just talked about, the particulate matter, it goes in, you inhale it, and it goes through your entire circulatory system: reproductive, respiratory, cardiovascular, and now we now into your nervous system and sits in your brain. First study done on humans in British Columbia in January, exposing the particulate matter. 25 adults volunteered. They took an MRI before and measured their ability for the connections between your brain cells. And after exposure, and there was a significant drop in your connectivity and neurodegenerative functions. So very serious for this, all of our body parts. Health impacts on us. We could actually meet clean air and reduce some of this pollution by going electric, hydrogen fuel cell. We prevent 1,500 premature deaths. Look at the hospitalizations we prevent. The kids right there. And then in the third column, I've coached for 30 years in South Pasadena, San Marino kids, South Pass kids, Pasadena kids. Last year, the first time, I had three kids in my team with asthma, with inhaler and inhaler. Every practice, every game, had to be very careful. They didn't overdo it. We save $19 billion in health costs if we reduce that pollution. Good news on the left, the ozone's gone way down since the 90s. You can see, but it's leveled off. On the right, the purple in 2012 is bad. That's cancer-causing toxics, the metals from your brakes, your tires, other types of emissions. Down to 2018, big reduction, but still the worst in the nation. Again, the bad news, we have no control over it. EPA, the federal government, trucks, planes, trains, ships, off-road construction equipment. Quick thing, three agencies regulate air quality, EPA, CARB, and AQMD. If we don't meet these standards, the very bottom, it says 2023, 2031, 2037, there are sanctions, and we could lose, we could actually, all of our permit. If you have a gas station, a factory, dry cleaner, the federal government could double your permit fees. They could take away a billion dollars in federal funding. And they could actually say, they were with a draft plan in Southern California a few years ago. On odd number of days, only these cars can drive, and on this number of days, only even number of cars can drive. So serious. Good news, there's a lot of money available for your residents, Mr. Mayor. $1,500 off, you got to put in a cleaner furnace, a rebate program going on now. You got a mower, you cut your grass, we'll give you $250 off for an electric mower. Hold on, Ken. EV charger, you get an EV charger level two. We'll give you $250 off. If you don't make much money, you have to $500 off. Want to turn the polling card? Get you some newer car, a hybrid car, plug-in electric hybrid, electric hydrogen fuel cell, up to $9,500 off. We've even given away a couple bikes or a transit pass. At the bottom, a little rectangle, we're developing a program for zero emission appliances. It'll be coming out very soon for your residents and yourselves, too. Great news now for your gardeners. Mom &amp; Pop Gardeners is a state program we pushed through Portentino. Worked with us. $27 million, about $15, $17 million left. Mom &amp; Pop Gardeners, don't have to turn anything in. They can get up to 70% off. Get an all-wheel drive, state-of-the-art leaf blower, which you're going to see in a moment, it's very quiet. Weed vipers, everything. AQMD just opened our program, 85% off. So some of those large riding mowers you use on Huntington Drive, which I see the Air Max, I think they're called, the red ones, maybe you have the $20,000, $25,000 cost. With this, our program, AQMD, just came out last week, that $20,000, $25,000 mower will cost you $5,000 and you have plus sales tax. So you can save a dramatic amount of money on all the equipment right now. You have to turn in your dirty old gas or diesel stuff, but we'll do a 30-second demonstration. Ken, chalk-ins, used to work for gas company in Edison, will show us, demonstrate. This is a handheld electric leaf blower. Hold on, Ken. It's a little battery pack. The battery pack, it lasts about 35, 40 minutes. You can take it in and out. It's a little tough to pull out, but you pull it out, you can hold it in there. You keep it in there hard. But there's also back pot blowers, which it can go for two, three hours. And we give the gardeners, cities, school districts, nonprofits, 85% off for this equipment, state-of-the-art. Ken, if I had a gas mower, gas leaf blower, I couldn't even turn on for half a second. It'd be polluted. You have to clear out the entire area here, and you couldn't hear yourself anything, but this is...
We have you arrested.
We have you arrested, too. And a chief's back there. So go ahead, Ken. If you want to. Just show you the power, and the guy's quiet.
I love you.
So very important, but just to the tune, there's a lot of money available. And what's going on in your area of cities, if South Pass just passed, or just last year banning gas bar leaf blowers. Pasadena passed it the other, about a year ago. Glendale, I was there three weeks ago, just passed theirs. So starting to spread. If you want to consider, know you have some rules about eight to five, and weekends nine. So consider that because gardeners all around you, even in Altadena, we did two libraries about last year. They've converted over. So Glendale's, not only the ordinance, but as a city, 75 to 80% of our parks have now been converted over to all electric. All of our parks are. Pasadena's parks will be all converted over to all electric within the next couple months. There's also money available in a shuttle. We got about $70,000 off. There's much state funding available for you. So I'll be happy to work with your staff if you want. Councilmember Ken Wilder Rainbow, you and us here from our staff also, be happy to work with you. If you got companies here, some of your residents may be wealthy on some trucking companies. Up to a couple hundred thousand dollars, lots of everybody, their diesel truck, say they love your truck. We'll happy to work with your residents on that, too. There's money that comes from, everyone of your residents pays a registration fee on their car when you renew their car registration. Out of that $4, you get 40%. You've used some of the money already for cleaning, replace your ride. There's money available, 30% goes to mobile source reduction review committee. And finally, every... And finally, every year you get that 40% adds up. If you look at the bottom rectangle, you've got 131,000. You took about 16, so you've got over $100,000 sitting there in a fund, which is great. You do some for code enforcement vehicle, a police department detective, car replacement vehicle. That money can be used to reduce mobile source pollution. Battery chargers, hydrogen fuel chargers, electric cars, plug-in hybrid cars. Just let you know, our police force and the chief, I know this, we're transitioning over our entire fleet to all patrol fleet. So we've got vehicles just came in a few months ago, 10 Tesla Model Ys and 10 Tesla Model 3s. Two of these still are down at Unplugged where we do our outfitting. And two of those cars are going through the specifications being outfitted. Will be done in the next three to four weeks. And we'll be training with officers for a few weeks, few months. Then they'll be on patrol, detective. So again, detectives are Model 3, the bigger cars. For the police needs, they'll be a Model Y. We did this study for several years. I've been pushing it for 10 years, but we finally did it. There's about 20 or so departments across the nation that started one or two. Some of them on half will be the first to go all electric. But this is money that can be used for that, for transitioning your parks maintenance to all electric, for just public works cars to transition over. So a lot of money available to save your budget as you go through your budget. Also, if you've got, any of your small businesses need assistance from us and for whatever the reason is, they can call that number. We'll come out personally and work with them. We want to keep people in business. If you have a complaint, when I was in San Fernando, four weeks ago, the council member said, Mayor, there's an asphalt company right here. There's dust, there's smells, there's odors. Staff went out there, the next day they were closed. They followed them out again. They have their proper record keeping. Said we want to keep you open, but you've got to follow the rules. When there's schools that complain, the neighborhood, we pamper them with information. Call when you're in the smoke. If you feel something that smells weird or you feel dangerous, we'll come out with our staff, take samples, back to our library, let you know what it is. There's also a free app. You can download our app. Whenever I go to my cities, I, it's on the train, I rode my bike today. But as I come into your city, I'll turn on my AQMD app in San Marino. The air quality is almost in the green zone. It's just going to be over 50, 50 degrees here, 54, which we are because of a little, again, the photochemical reaction of the smog, which causes the smog in the air, but still really good air quality. We've got 39 monitors, not far from here by PCC. There's one of our closest monitors from the Ford County region. So we know what's going on with pollution. We also contract with Department of Defense, EPA, certain pollutants in case there's ever an attack. We monitor, there's a lot of sensors on the market right now that people can go buy at your store. At our facility in Diamond Bar, you can test out the sensors to see if they work. Again, my name, there's Ken Chalkins and Rainbow, if you need help. Here answering any questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I know that you've supplied us with a full or full of material. Anybody have any questions? Do you have a question?
I was just going to pass this over to our Director of Finance because the application deadline for the larger equipment is May 9th. So it might be worth thinking about during our budget process.
I can give her a whole packet.
Yeah, he's got a whole package.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for coming. And Rainbow, you know, I get emails from you all the time and I thought they were joking bells, Rainbow, you know. And I'm happy that there's somebody there. You send out great emails and it always catches my attention.
Thank you for reading my emails.
This doesn't have much today.
Yeah. No, not at all. In fact, I'm going to change my legal name to Rainbow Talk, so people will actually look at my name as well. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing and consideration resolution. Number R-23-12, rescinding resolution number R-21-14 and approving of mixed use project at 2404 Mission Street and finding the approval categorically accepted from sequel pursuant to guidelines section 15303 and 15332. Let the record reflect that the notice of this hearing was published and posted as required by law. I believe the Director Figaro will have a presentation for the council director.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Wong, the same council members. On April 14th, 2021, the city council adopted resolution number R-21-14 to deny the demolition of a one-story single-family residence and replace it with the construction of a two-story mixed-use building. The council denied the project based on three factors. One, the property did not have enough square footage to construct two residential units based on the density requirements identified in the city's code after the deduction of an existing 14-foot access easement. The project did not provide the requisite fire access for 2402 Mission Street, which is a residential property behind the project site. And the project was not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan. On June 7th, 2022, the applicant filed a lawsuit challenging the denial of the project. On February 15th, 2023, the court invalidated the city's reasons for denial and ordered the city to resent the prior denial of the project and resolution number R-21-14 and comply with the requirements of the Housing Accountability Act and reconsider the project no later than April 15th of this year. Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing to reconsider and approve the project consistent with the requirements of the Housing Accountability Act. This concludes staff's presentation. And staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lowe, you have any questions for Director Figaro?
So I just wanted to make sure that, so currently the project is, it consists with all the codes or at least that's the core ruling. And any fire codes, any, is there anything that the project's not?
I'll have the city attorney address that question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the project currently meets all codes. With regard to the codes that the council previously found that the project did not meet, the court has ruled to the contrary. So in that regard, it meets all codes.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
And please reserve any opinion you have on this until after the close of the public hearing portion. Councilmember Cho, you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Shepherd Romi.
I just wanted some clarification from our city attorney about the last statement. My understanding is the judge rendered the judgment saying that, not that it met all of our codes. However, we did not give notice of violations within the time. So we waived those rights to enforce certain provisions in our codes by not giving notice within the 30 days that was required under the Housing Accountability Act. Is that correct?
Yes, with regard to the sections that the council indicated that the project did not comply with in terms of the general plan policies and objectives, and with regard to the minimum lot size and variance issues, the court indicated that those issues had to be identified within 30 days of the application being deemed complete. And the applicant had to be notified of that, which they were not. And based on that, the court has concluded that the project is deemed in compliance with those under the law.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And also regarding the fire code is a little bit of a different circumstance. Is that correct? The judge there had a different finding relating to our public safety concerns that the council previously remarked about.
Yes, in that regard, the judge made a few determinations with regard to the fire code sections that were cited in the original resolution. First, that the court indicated they did not believe that the code sections applied to the project. The concern was raised with regard to access to the unit behind the project. And the court's interpretation of the statute was that it, that statute applied to the project being built, not existing structures that needed to be accessed. And then the second issue was that even if there were a health and safety concern, the court indicated that the city had not demonstrated there was sufficient evidence of a health and safety concern in the record and also that the, that with regard to the.
Easement?
No, I'm sorry. That there's not sufficient evidence and that the court, that the city had not indicated that there was no possible way to mitigate any of the concerns and had not gone through an analysis of any possible mitigation or eliminated the possibility of mitigation.
All right. And the last question that I had is concerning a legal, there was a conveyance, I don't know what the proper term is, I'm sorry. And there's a lot of paperwork here of a two-foot by 195-foot space to increase the lot size. And that was done between the property owner and the owners of the property behind. And that was recorded during the course of the project? Is that right? Relating to the width of that easement?
When the project was originally submitted, staff indicated that there was insufficient unencumbered land for two residential units to be built on the site because of the existence of a 14-foot recorded easement, a 14-foot wide recorded easement. And staff indicated to the applicant that that needed to be addressed. The applicant addressed it by reducing the size of that easement and having that two-foot conveyed, which freed up additional unencumbered space so that they then qualified for the two residential units meeting the minimum 5,000 square feet per unit.
Right, because it pushed the total lot size, given the conveyance.
Correct.
Over 10,000 square feet.
Correct.
And the last question that I had is the 14-foot width was a requirement back by a prior city council decades ago when that landlocked property behind was allowed to be used or a single-family residence was put back there. Is that correct?
Yes, it was a condition of the grant of a variance to allow for the lot splitting creation of the rear unit back in the 50s and 60s.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Westman, do you have any questions?
No.
If you do not have any questions, is the appellant available? And thank you for it, Figaro. Is the appellant available and would they like to be heard? Please be advised that the appellant, including consultants, architects or attorneys, will be limited to 10 minutes total.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, to be honest, we're just here tonight to observe the proceedings. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have about the proceedings today. I do want to thank your city attorney and your staff for being very gracious throughout this process and in communicating with us. We've had some dialogue, obviously, with them about what the court ruled and getting the paperwork replaced so that you can go forward tonight moving the project. Otherwise, more than happy to answer any questions, but I think the court's ruling sort of speaks for itself.
Is there anybody else on the appellate team that would like to speak? If not, I will open it up to council members, whether they have any questions for Mr. McDonald. Councilmember Cho, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Shepherd Romi?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Lowe?
No question.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, question.
I have no questions that I'm going to ask you then. Okay, does anyone here, thank you. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time on this matter? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Yes.
This is Mayor Wong. I live on Euclid Avenue and they're pretty close to their project. I'm just curious whether this, you know, project will, you know, set up the example for future, you know, similar projects in the city.
I don't think we're, I think you may hear a response to your question when we discuss it amongst ourselves, but we're not going to respond directly to members of the public at this point. So we will take your question under advisement at the time that the council has an opportunity to speak. Do you have anything further, Mr. Wong? Okay, thank you. I know you want an answer right now, but it's not how this works. Anyone else have any public comment that's here in the room? Seeing none, I will ask if there are any public, oh, pardon me. Oh, yes, Ms. Johnson.
Good you're here. It's been a long time since I've been here. It's nice to see you. I just.
State your name.
Oh, Stephanie Johnson, 1920, Los Rocos. Former pain in the neck.
Oh, don't mimic yourself, Stephanie.
Dennis isn't here. Having been involved with several of these issues on Mission Street over the years, I'm concerned. I read through the judgment and I'm disappointed in two ways. I'm disappointed that of the judgment itself, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city of San Marino. And I'm disappointed that it seems that maybe we haven't been careful enough in reviewing some of these projects that there was issues clearly left open for the judge to disagree with us. Given all of the changes in mandate from the state about increasing housing density, I would assume that there's going to be more of this coming up. So I would just hold it and ask the council on behalf of all the residents, and I believe the man who spoke just before me is in the same mode, that we're all concerned. And I think you all know that we're all concerned. And so we appreciate that you look out after the interest of all of our interests and the interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, any electronically submitted questions or public comments?
Let me see if Zoom participants messaged me in the chat. I did send them all a message to message me in the chat. While we see if any of those come in, we did receive a letter from Mr. McDonald, the representative of the appellant, that was previously distributed to both council and the public.
We've had an opportunity to review, it's a decision to review.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any requests for comment from Zoom.
Okay, I will ask the appellant if they would like to rebut anything that was raised in public comment by our public commenters.
Just one, I deal with this across a wide swath of cities throughout California. The question, does this set a precedent, comes up far more than you would believe. In fact, I honestly can't think of a matter where it hasn't come up. And my answer to that is always the same and probably very similar to what your city attorney would say. These types of cases are fact specific. As the prior speaker noted, they often depend on procedural anomalies. And often, I hate to say, procedural mistakes. The failure to give a notice within a certain time period. The failure to catch a particular point. But that's what the courts focus on. They focus on those procedures and policies and processes. So from the appellant's perspective, this is a unique situation involving some of those kind of issues that the court addressed. The next one may be very, very different. There may be no procedural mistakes. It may be perfectly handled. People get wiser as the process goes along. Staff learns what's required and what's not. And so it's not something that I ever generally regard as precedent setting.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Does any council member have any further questions before I close the public hearing? Councilmember Cho, Councilmember Shepherd Romi, any further questions for staff or for the appellant? Councilmember Lowe, Vice Mayor? Nothing, and I have no further questions. So I will close the public. Testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed. This time, we'll bring the item back to council for discussion. I will start with Councilmember Cho. Do you have any comments?
Only that, just to highlight, the situation is really driven.
Only that, just to highlight, the situation is really driven, like it's been mentioned on both sides. It's a process-driven issue that's come up, and I think the city and the rest of us have learned a lot from this situation.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, do you have any comment you would like to make?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I wanted to speak on this so that the community understands where we are and a little bit of what the city council, as well as the planning commission, the steps that have gone before us regarding this piece of property, and how long, really, we've been dealing with construction projects and sort of the chain of events. So everybody's aware in a more encompassing of what started at, on Mission 2404. And lay out the facts so that everybody can form their opinions and we can be as transparent as we can. Over the four years, my understanding is the original construction project, not the one that is currently the subject of the lawsuit, came before us in 2019, came before the city. And that was for a home that was about 4,000 square feet and 25 feet tall to replace the existing structure, which is a very modest home. It's about 15 feet tall and about 1,500 square feet. That's been existing there for a very long time and looks very similar to the adjacent property, which is also a very modest home on one side. That project was denied by the planning commission as well as the city council for being too large in terms of the mass and the scale and some other, it was deemed to be incompatible with itself in terms of design, as well as the neighbors affecting them negatively and the neighborhood. And so after conducting the hearing, city council rejected that, and the property owners came back to us in 2021 with the project we see before us tonight. And that is an entirely new, much larger project of over 7,000 square feet, 7,118 square feet, that now is set two feet from the front sidewalk and two feet, four inches from one of the side, one of the neighboring properties, which is very close, as well as the side that has this driveway easement is now shortened as well. So it takes up the largest part of the front area of the lot, and it will dwarf all of the surrounding buildings. And this is because the project, by having both a 6,000-square-foot mansion and a 638 internal tiny separate family housing unit, qualifies under the Housing Accountability Act, which provides for multiple family residents on a single lot. And because of that, we have several issues that it does not comport with our general plan, given its massive scale and size. It's not compatible with the neighborhood, either the commercial or the adjacent residential properties. And I believe that the planning commission in denying it in the past, as well as the city council in denying it with the additional reasons of public safety, because of that back home and the access that our paramedics and our firefighters need to properly care for should there be a structure fire there and fight it for the surrounding property's benefit, makes it truly a dangerous situation. And we were forced to do some of this analysis very quickly when we were warned about the Housing Accountability Act and the constraints within it. And I believe that staff tried to address those, but probably did in general terms. But I still have a lot of problems, and I think the community as well concerns that this really does not match our general plan and is contrary to what most of us envision this city to look like, even if it would be, we're required to do or take certain actions because of the case that we decided to fight on the city's behalf, also to oppose this project. So all that being said, I share the concerns that were expressed here tonight and that we've heard in the past and during our public comments. And I think this type of mixed use is again a problem and a contrary to our general plan as well as the sheer size and volume of a project when, I believe the legislative intent, you have to be a legal scholar here, and so I look to our city attorney, but of the Housing Accountability Act is to make more housing and affordable housing for families. And just adding in a 630-foot internal unit in a 7,000-square-foot building is not really going to house or help anybody with our housing crisis that we have in the state. So I believe it was manipulated in order to build the biggest structure possible between that and also the conveyance of two feet from the existing fire easement. So I just wanted the public to know that, at least speaking for myself as a council member, both previously when we voted on this as well as currently, I still believe that this is not an appropriate project for San Marino and would hope that we would consider appealing this ruling or finding other ways to stop the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Lowe?
Well, like Councilmember, or Councilmember Shepherd-Romney just expressed. So, yes, and then as many of our residents concern, well, especially under the current new housing, housing requirements of the state, we're facing a lot of challenges. So I guess this is great learning process that council members, you know, with the community together, we will work harder while satisfying the state requirements and would do our best to preserve the heritage of our town and the historic heritage and also the single-family tradition, single-family home, would do our best to preserve this, what makes San Marino to San Marino. Thank you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
I agree with Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, and I'm concerned just as most of residents, and I wonder whether this is taking San Marino to, you know, maybe 50 years later, San Marino won't be San Marino again. And I'm just, you know, I'm devastated, just like you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will tell you, and I want to speak frankly, I don't like, I don't like a lot of things about what has happened. I don't like what the state has done in maybe certain requirements, not only in housing, but in timelines. I guess the state figures we'll have enough time and money to rush these projects, but we don't. I don't like that. I don't like that we have to go through a complicated process in evaluating every project. I don't like the fact that the applicant changed what was there for a long time when it came to the easement. I don't like that. I don't like that the applicant has ignored what the city of San Marino is trying to develop in that is single-family neighborhoods. Whether I like it or not, doesn't matter. I'm obligated to follow the constitution of a state in California. And while we have an appellate right, a right to appeal, it does make sense to pour good money after what is most likely a losing effort on our part. We got to balance it. And I have to respect the court. I don't like the court's decision, but I have to respect that. And when I look at this, I can sleep at night based upon two areas on this decision. And that is, number one, this property is zoned commercial. And it is not a really a single-family neighborhood in our traditional sense. I can sleep at night knowing that in my discussions with staff, we're taking certain action to make sure these procedural problems don't happen again. We were caught in a time period where there was transition in our, in our department with these new laws coming down and a very complicated process. But we, as other council members, have learned from this. And I will continue to do my best to make sure this is not a precedent. As Mr. McDonald did say, these facts are fact-driven, but we are not going to change laws allowing for this to happen just because this project snuck through. And that's exactly what it's done. It snuck through. We requested, and just to get back to the history of this, when the project was first denied, we requested, I think the consensus, although not mandatory consensus, was if you would just lower the project a bit. They ignored that and decided to go to Cone and develop this whole new idea, an idea that the applicant, I would imagine, knew the city of San Marino does not like. And they got through on a procedural error on our part. We made a mistake. And when I make a mistake, I try to fix it. I didn't make a mistake, but the city made a mistake. But we are going to fix this, sir, to make sure that this is not precedent. We are doing our best, but each is very fact-specific. So I just, I'm elected to make very tough decisions, and this is probably one of the toughest ones, but given that this property is next to the watch, right next to South Pasadena, so. My phone, you have to do it.
I'm ready with my phone.
Yeah, I guess so. And so it's an exception that right there that I could live with. I'm not happy about it, but the court has spoken, and I have to honor that. So I will be voting to save money, the $200,000 that we'd spend in attorney's fees, both ours and theirs, if we were to lose, to allow this project to go through this, the court has set the odds. I will entertain a motion at this point.
Can I make one comment?
Well, yes, so.
I don't hear anybody making a motion quite yet, Mayor. So just a matter of indulgence. I, this has, generally speaking, we do have issues with Sacramento legislators, and I just want, taking away local control, and this is an interesting situation we have found ourselves in because they also have made things so draconian in terms of how quickly our departments and our staff have to act and review when projects of any size, but particularly complicated projects, come forward. And I think that burden is tremendous on small cities. Even if it wasn't a transition and other circumstances were different, this is still going to be very hard for our city staff to deal with and our surrounding cities as well that consider themselves primarily single-family residents. So I think our residents have to, I'm hoping that they will consider their vote for our congressional, not congressional, sorry, state legislators. And both, but someone, and also ask that our city attorney keeps us informed and aware, perhaps, and considers what other things we can do to both have a check or some assistance for our community development department when projects come in that have multiple units or have things that might, and how we can approach those so we can help that whole process become more efficient and not make, overlook things that may benefit our community in the future, what projects such as this. I mean, there are a lot of other factors involved here, but we really would like some guidance, and I think it's important to help our community development department because in the future we may see more. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm still entertaining a motion and.
I'll move to adopt resolution, and, sorry, number R2312, rescinding resolution number R2114 and approving this CUP conditional use permit, numbers 2005, 2016, and design review number DRC 2029HP for the mixed-use project at 2404 Mission Street.
Is there a second?
One second.
We'll call, please.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No.
Vice Mayor Wong?
No.
Mayor Taal?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will move to, you know, I will take a two-minute break. If people that are here would like to leave after this public hearing, why don't we just give you a second to do that? So that we can talk about you behind your back. Yes, and calls back to order. Item number two under new business is adopted resolution number R2309, change the name from San Marino Center to San Marino Community Center. Director Johnson is here. I wasn't looking at my notes. We have a recitation from Director Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Taal, Vice Mayor Wong, and Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, Cho, and Lowe. The new business item in front of you seeks to get council's consideration to formally change the facility name of the San Marino Center to the San Marino Community Center. This is accomplished by way of adopting the proposed council resolution. You may recall that in 2004, the city purchased the former women's club property adjacent to the library at 1800 Huntington Drive. In December of that year, records indicate that council approved the name change to the San Marino Center, uniquely spelled Center at that time with an RE at the end. You might have seen that in some records. In 2022, however, staff shared with the city administration and council members that community feedback had been received over recent years with confusion that still exists related to who owns the property, what is it used for, or its primary functionality to city services. For example, the comments that we received ranged from, I thought this was a women's club. What is the San Marino Center and who actually owns the building? And what is the facility's use again? The renovation and reopening of the property, as we all know, will provide us with the opportunity to rename and rebrand the building to clear up any of this confusion. The facility essentially functions as the city's only multi-use community center dedicated to serving all ages and groups that pursue indoor recreation, leisure activities, fitness and wellness programs, social activities and events, community meetings and banquets, and private rental occasions. In addition, the facility is prepared to support a variety of community meetings and both city-sponsored and private trainings and conferences. Adding "community" to the facility title promotes civic ownership, unrestricted access, and inclusiveness. The city's historical consultant confirmed there are no issues or restrictions related to this name change, and based on that information, the city attorney has also confirmed that it is within the city's discretion to rename the facility. Last fall, the two community services department council liaisons were also consulted related to this consideration, and both were in support of bringing the item forward to council. On February 13th, 2023, the Recreation Commission also unanimously voted to request that city council consider and approve the name change. This is a time-sensitive decision as fabrication is set to begin on the facility signage. There's a total of three facility signs of the property. Next slide, please. One is the main entrance sign right here, or the monument sign, which is double-sided, facing east-west on Huntington Drive. Next slide, please. The second sign is a raised planter sign located across from the south parking lot between the two buildings, one indicating Crowell Public Library and the other situated facing towards the new building. The third sign will be, is considered the actual building sign with the address number right here, located facing Huntington Drive and left of the main entrance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I was, I haven't seen, I didn't know that the schematics, are they in our pocket?
No, it's, the visuals that you saw today were strictly just for presentation purposes. This side before you is about the name change, not necessarily the signs. This side before you is about the name change, not necessarily the signs themselves.
Okay, okay, so I do have a follow-up question about the signs themselves. Were they from the task, I listened to task force? I don't know what, or were they from, and have they gone before DRC? Because we have rules about our signage, and I'm very conscious of the city abiding by their own rules that we also expect. And I know we require, it was quite a struggle for commercial vendors in town sometimes, particularly. So I'm wondering.
Yeah, I will defer that question to either our public works director or our community public director.
Well, you know, this is on the calendar for discussion of that. If you'd like to ask them eventually, as of personally, we're limited to it as to what we can discuss because the Brown Act, the only approval that's being sought today is the change of the name.
Okay, then I would say before it's being fabricated, it has to go before DRC. Is that the correct procedure that we'll be following? How about that?
That's fair.
Yes, the project would have to go before DRC for review and approval.
Thank you. There you have it.
I wish more time objecting to moving on. The answer is fine. Any further questions?
That is it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cho? Councilmember Lo?
I have some questions. So would be any lighting on this time?
Again, we're only dealing.
That'll be for the DRC.
Yes.
Okay, then I have no questions.
Yeah, we won't have to deal with that unless someone appeals it. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, have you considered using the mayor's name in?
It's community. It's your community. I have a question to say, is there any public comment on this matter?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dohmeyer?
Good evening, Mayor Taunt, Vice Mayor Wong, council members. I'm Steve Diller. I just want to quickly say I do my own yard work, and I've been using battery-operated electro appliances for years, so I'm delighted by it. So Michael's not here to hear that, but he's our friend, so.
I made that comment early.
I know, I just didn't have the chance. I am proud to have served with several of my fellow San Marino citizens on the task force for the renovation of the San Marino Center. And when one works closely on a project for over two years, sometimes you forget that not everyone has the same awareness of things that you have. So when I heard from other citizens of our city that they didn't really know what the San Marino Center was, I realized something should be done to clarify the issue, and the city staff has suggested a solution that I strongly support. The simple act of adding the word "community" clearly indicates what the structure is and, more importantly, who it is for. So by all means, let's be clear about this. Community is why we're here. And adding that one word announces to all that the San Marino Community Center is a gathering place for everyone who resides in our beautiful city to come together for activities and celebrations, to share good times and new memories. Let's do what we can to make sure nobody's confused about what this building is and call it exactly what it is, the San Marino Community Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any other further comment from in the room? Seeing none, any electronically submitted questions?
I have not received any comments via chat and nothing but.
Thank you. I will close public comment and bring it back. Thank you very much, Director, bring it back to the council for further discussion. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, do you have anything further to say on this matter?
No, I appreciate the work, the comments by Mr. Dohmeyer, you know, discussing this. I'm surprised people don't know what the San Marino Center is. But again, being wasted not ear deep in most of this. I feel like we talked about it for long enough. Everybody should be aware. But I don't have a problem with this, and I appreciate that Director Johnson came forward with this to kind of organize the effort to get that done. And I think it'll be a good improvement, maybe help people know what it is. I don't know about the acronym SMCC because we now have a third, we have San Marino Committee Church, we have San Marino Congregational Church, and now we have San Marino Committees Act. So if we're doing abbreviations.
Sure, you can abbreviate SMCC and then go to the rest.
I wish my daughter heard that from you. But I'm supportive of this, and I appreciate the effort to continue to bring this to our community.
Councilmember Cho?
Nothing else.
Councilmember Lo? Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
And I'm supportive of it, although I will admit, I'll probably go through my life saying, yeah, I'll be the women's club. Just where you grew up, but I do think we'll help, especially people coming into town for an event. We may all know it, but they may not. I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R 2309, a resolution of the City Council of San Marino, San Marino, California, changing the name of San Marino Center to San Marino Community Center.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved to second. Let's just go ahead and do roll call. We're so used to it.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Taunt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the consent calendar. And just a reminder that you can always vote no on a separate matter. Does anybody wish to take off any matters on our, on items three through 11 on the consent calendar?
No.
Hearing done, I will then entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Mayor?
Yes.
Public comment for the consent calendar?
Oh, gosh, yes. Is there any public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? See none? Is there anything electronic?
There is not, thank you. I have to, I have to.
I know you. Thank you for keeping me honest.
Yeah, somebody needs to do it.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is a second on any of these matters? Yes, we should do roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Taunt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Consent calendar's passed. Do we have any written communication with public bodies for distribution? Any council member receive anything for distribution? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? If so, please state their name and address. For the record, as a reminder, the city council is not legally allowed to engage in discussion on any items that are not on the agenda. Is there any requests for public comment?
I have no request for public comment.
Is there any public comment in the room or electronically?
No, no requests for public.
No requests for public comment. Is there any items the council would like to add to a future agenda? Just as a reminder, you have to have support of two other council members to place it on the agenda. Anyone?
Only if the city attorney wants to do a draw, or may or wants to do a straw poll for my request that the city attorney keep us abreast of what possible resolutions we could make to deter future projects, mansionization projects, let's say, or mixed-use projects increasingly in the city.
We will, I don't think, I would concur with that. I don't think that we, would anybody else disagree with that? Would we like to know? I think council generally would like to know, and I know I'm speaking out of everybody's eye, but I do that all the time. So.
We are tracking legislation. We are working on updating the city's ordinances, and we are also working with the Seadrum and his staff concerning checklists and processes and procedures to try to make sure that we are, everybody in the building is on top of applications as they come in.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just didn't know what we needed.
No, I, thank you, too, to be honest. Everybody's busy keeping me honest. I believe that a council member would like to make a special adjournment.
Oh, no, sorry. I just realized the windows wasn't on the agenda. Is that going to be on the next agenda?
I think it has to go before, it hasn't been addressed by our, well, I will let the director speak to it.
It's our goal to have it within the next two agendas. Okay.
Okay, do any council members have a special adjournment? I believe we probably all do at this point. Would like to adjourn in the memory of Wendy. Lo, I know that you've been very brave, and we appreciate you coming. She was a lovely woman, and I friends of Nicole's. And we all pray for you and your two kids and her family. And Neilie Wood is really a very tragic. And when I spoke to Calvin, the one thing he told me was Wendy never complained during this whole process, and I think that that's something we all strive for. So it's an honor to adjourn in her name. Any other special adjournments? Hearing none, I adjourned today's regular meeting to Friday, April 21st, and we're adjourning in memory of Wendy Wood. Thank you.